Select Board's meeting, December 11th, 2017. In attendance, Mr. Mogul, Mr. Fox, Mr. Deedy, Mr. Steinhardt, and Cindy Palton.
Good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, December 11th. We'll open up with public comments. If anyone has any public comments they'd like to make to the Select Board, now's your opportunity. If you could raise your hand and when I call on you, just state your name and address for the record. Sir?
Roger Cattaldo, Ford Field Street, Southwick. I'm going to bring up some old business here real quick, and I have some input about this North Pond personal watercraft restriction. I've been on the boat patrol for 20 years on the Southwick Police Department, and the jet skis are not the problem, for one thing. We have more problems with pontoon boats pulling skiers and jet skis, and not the jet skis, but the jet boats, causing more weight over there. And I'm a boater, and I also have a jet ski. And I don't even bother going over there because it's not big enough. And when I used to do the patrol, we had very little trouble with it. It's like anything else, it's a lot of people don't know the rules or regulations of a lake. But the other thing I'd like to have put into it is, North Pond, it doesn't help the funding to get money for North Pond because people on the lake do not want to give it to you to, because to give it to the town is because they feel they're going to get restricted on not bringing their other, either pontoon boats using the shoreline. I'm president of the Congamum Heights Boat Association. I've been trying to get money for the lake and for the donation, and they tell me they don't want to donate to it because all they're going to do is fill it in with guilty use. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Again, thank you. We've got a minute, so we'll knock out a couple of things. First is, we'll acknowledge a payables warrant, number 1814B, dated December 4th, in the amount of $2,437,191.96. And a payroll warrant, 1814, dated today, in the amount of $241,191.32. And we have minutes from November 27th.
Are you fine?
Huh? I'm good with it.
Make a motion for November 27th minutes.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Were there executive session?
There were.
There were.
I'll make a motion for executive session minutes dated November 27th.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No. Are they roll call votes?
I don't believe so.
I don't think so either.
We've got one more set.
Another exec-- oh, we have, do we have the minutes from the--
Yeah, when you're back.
Yep.
The roundtable.
Right, the roundtable, the November 30th. And I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And one abstention for the record. That clock is way far away. Okay, so now we have a--
5:21.
Yep, public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, maybe we might want to do this before we go into anything.
Absolutely. Thank you for calling it to my attention, sir. First, we'd like to take a moment of silence and recognize Fire Chief Stephen Fry of Montgomery, Massachusetts, who died in the line of duty on December 6th. So if we could take a moment, please. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the Mass General Laws at the American Legion Southwick Post 338, Inc., has applied for a change of manager from Michelle Rosinski to Chastity Angela Crowell Miller for the on-premises all alcohol license located at 46 Powder Mill Road, Southwick, Mass. Property description, on the eastbound side of the road and two floors, one room upstairs, cellar used for storage, bar and meeting room, four entrances and a pavilion. Adheres to the conditions set forth in the September 29th, 2003 stipulation agreement. Alteration of serving premises based on the plan on file with the Southwick Licensing Commission increasing the serving area by 2,040 feet. The additional serving area encompasses a fenced-off section for outdoor serving and includes two 10-by-20 woodsheds to be used for storage and as an outside serving bar when needed. Public hearing to be held on December 11th at 5:20 PM in the Selectman's Conference Room, 454 College Highway, Southwick, Mass. Okay, so we need a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. So it's open, right?
It's open.
Okay, and I don't think it's a big deal, but since we're in the auditorium, I'm assuming that there's no one in the Selectman's Conference Room and we're okay?
No.
And you're okay with that, too?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay. Floor is yours. Anything to say?
No.
Good.
Do you have background?
I was the assistant manager of a larger bar for over seven years. Currently, I hold a Mass LICSW, and I practice as a therapist during the day and at night I'm at the bar, so I'm invested, and I practice in safety and making sure we're safe, and everybody's doing one.
Do you have your TIPS certification?
Yes, as well as everybody, all my bar staff is, I require them all to be TIPS certified.
Excellent.
Just for clarification, there's no changes?
Absolutely not. No change in hours, no change in status, it's just a change of--
Sometimes when you read this off, it says additional, and somebody might get the wrong impression, I just wanted to make sure that there are no changes.
Nope, so.
Nope.
Anything else we need, Cindy?
No.
Need a motion to close the hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, and then we would need a motion to appoint this manager, Chastity Angela Crowell Miller.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That was easy.
Thank you, gentlemen.
This is tomorrow.
Sending this back before I lose something important. Okay. Just want to go back to the action item folder for a little bit.
Yeah, we've got a few minutes, we've got five. Do you want to get that first chair mail with Randy? Do you have that?
Yeah, why don't we take a look at that? So, the first thing was in your chair mail. As most people should, are aware by now, there was a devastating fire in Santisfield this past weekend, and Randy Brown, our Director of Public Works, is making a suggestion that we consider loaning our Truck 6, a 1996 GMC Topkick, which will be placed by a new dump truck, which is due here this week. And it says the truck has issues, which is why we're taking it out of the rotation, but given that Santisfield has effectively nothing, this would be better than what they have right now. And he's looking for our thoughts on saying.
Why not? I think it's a good idea.
But also that as soon as they get something that's much better, it's okay if we take it back. They don't have to take it just because--
Correct.
You know what I mean? They'll know it's a junk too.
Probably in about an hour.
Yeah.
But yes. So what, do we need a motion on this, or do we just--
I think we need a motion. To just, you know--
To loan it to them?
Loan property to another--
Then we would get a certificate of insurance.
Right.
And I'll make that a formal motion.
I'll second that.
The motion is made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let me go that way, so that--
Let me have the other pen there.
I brought it just for you.
Thank you. I feel like the clerk.
I'm trying to be efficient going this way.
It's working fine.
Okay, so this is also, this is item 1A. As you're aware, DPW has recently internally posted the vacant former position at the transfer station. DPW received one application from Raymond Davignan--
Davion.
Huh?
Davion.
Davion III, who is currently a heavy equipment operator for the solid waste division. As such, DPW recommends promoting Mr. Davion for this position. DPW is in the process of interviewing several candidates for the open heavy equipment operator for the solid waste division. Once interviews and reference checks are complete, a recommendation will be made for your review and approval. And we have that and the posting. And the letter of interest, I thought. Yes.
Yep. So is already a letter of interest, too?
Yeah, that's a union.
This is Ray's letter of interest for this.
So I'll make a motion to, let's see, are we putting him there permanently?
Yep.
Yep, for Ray Davignan permanently to be in the heavy, currently heavy equipment operator--
Foreman.
At the transfer station.
Yep.
He already is. I'll second it, but can we have discussion?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. He just came on.
Right. And I've said this before, so I'm repeating myself now. This is about the third or fourth foreman down there.
Oh, at least, at least.
We need to have a detailed job description on exactly what's to be done, who's to do it, how things are supposed to be cleaned and kept up, how stickers are supposed to be checked--
Yep.
Recycling.
You don't feel that's in position now?
I don't think there's a clear understanding because we've had such a tremendous turnover.
Yeah.
And I'm not saying these are bad guys--
No, no.
But he just came on.
Literally.
Literally just came on this past year.
Yeah.
And now he's going to be foreman.
Yeah.
You know, and nobody has the experience--
Right. Doesn't have the depth or knowledge that a two or three-year-old guy would have.
So I would like to charge the DPW director, who can charge this supervisor, to come up with a detailed job description--
Absolutely.
And a detailed thing, so all the employees down there, because we've had a tremendous turnover, know exactly what we expect of them.
Yep.
And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to move the motion.
You have fresh young faces down there, and you're right, there's no, you know, the old days, you had a 20-year-old guy, a 20-year veteran that would explain to them, yes, we pick up trash, yes, we weed whack, yes, we don't swing the golf club anymore, you know, and those, we don't have the depth, you're right.
And other, maybe there's, might be some other issues to--
Oh, there's always other issues.
Right.
Yeah.
I believe a motion's been made and seconded. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Take all those notes, you're good?
I did. For brevity, I've--
Yes.
Okay.
Office of Fishing and Boating finally has the capital projects funding, estimated to be 275 big ones, to reconstruct the south ramp. Design permitting was completed several years ago, and includes replacement of the launchpad with die cast, with, sorry, cast-in-place concrete pads, addition of a handicap test recording dock, along with some dredging around the launchpad area. The project was recently advertised and is scheduled to be open on December 21st. Early spring construction is anticipated, as this ramp will be available for the public by the main boating season. I am working with the OFBA to secure funding via town contract to replace all lighting at both ramps with LED lighting and make some miscellaneous improvements at the north ramp facility. So this is an FYI?
Yep.
Okay, seeing how it's 5:30.
Yep.
Okay.
First contestant.
So we are going to start our interviews for the posted position of police chief.
Take four.
Take four. I want the ones Carlton touched.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir?
Before we begin, I'd like to go on the record for full disclosure, the four candidates. First candidate Sergeant Banish, a friend of many of his relatives, Lieutenant Bishop, I've known for many years, pointing at the highway police, highway police. Detective Sergeant Landis, of course, I knew his father, who was a dispatcher. And Sergeant Sanders is not only a personal friend of mine, but he also serves on the board of directors with me at the Southwick Rec. Just full disclosure.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay. The first interviewee is Sergeant Rhett E. Banish.
It's going to be tough reaching across this table.
Yeah, what was this all about?
All right.
Sir?
You stretch, you think so? No. I would have made it. I didn't want you to come out of your shoes. All right. Well, I was noticing we're all good, so.
Well, let's see.
Would you like a water, sir?
Sure, I'll take a water.
Would you like a warm one or a cold?
Cold, of course.
Okay, you're the only one who gets that choice.
Everybody else is getting--
Everyone else is getting a warm one. Okay.
He's to be first sometimes.
Exactly. Thank your parents, because it's alphabetical, right? Okay. So how this is going to work, we have approximately 12 questions for you, and there may be some follow-ups and some other stuff like that, and we are going to take turns asking questions starting to my left, and we'll go through, and at the end, you'll have an opportunity to make any statements or ask any questions of the Select Board. And later this evening, the board plans to discuss this. I do not know if we are going to make a decision this evening or not.
Understood.
Fair enough?
Fair enough.
Okay, so then, that's my left.
Great. I marked all of them, so I don't want to lose mine. Okay, so question one is, what do you perceive are the chief's major responsibilities? I believe the chief is responsible for all things policing. He's in charge of the budget, he's in charge of equipment, he's in charge of personnel, he's in charge of, you know, basically coming up with our schedules, deciding where everyone needs to be, how to best, how to best put us in place for the best interests of both the town, the department, and the community as a whole.
Okay, thank you. Since you have worked under several chiefs in the past, what would your management philosophy be like?
I've had the opportunity to work now under, let's see, Chief LaBumbard, Chief Krenicki, Chief Ricardi. My management style, I think, would be a little bit different. I'm from a different generation than these past three that I've just mentioned. They've been more of a, I want to say, basically been more of a, I don't want to say authoritarian style of management, but definitely not anywhere along the lines of participant democratic style of leadership. I think my management style would be more in between authoritarian and democratic. I think you have to involve the members of both the police department and the community as a whole to determine where you're really going to go with your long-term goals and objectives.
Rhett, as police chief, how will you interact with the community so that the town will really get to know their chief?
When I was looking at, you know, whether or not I wanted to really go through with this whole thing, I looked at a number of different programs and stuff that I think I would like to run. Community programs are one of those things. I think, again, for the community to get fully behind the police department, they need to understand, you know, where the department stands, what they do. Some of the things I think I would like to explore would be more community outreach type of programs. I might be looking at, you know, a program where you, you know, maybe go out and you carve pumpkins with people, maybe you go out and have ice cream with people, maybe you have coffee with individuals, all to get them to get comfortable around you and see that, you know, you are a human being, you're not some guy in a blue suit who's unemotional and detached from everyone else. Additional programs I would probably look at would be a, like a high school-style police academy program, a cadet program, or I should say explorer program, I don't really have cadets here. I've thought about a multitude of them, unfortunately, some of those are escaping me right now, so I may round back to those later on in the interview.
Okay. Good.
Okay. All right, how would you like to, I don't think it makes sense the way it's written, but we'll discuss that later. How would you like to formulate a police department budget? Boy, that's sort of a tough question. I mean, I don't have a lot of experience, unfortunately, with budgeting at this point in time. Right. All my experience is basically book knowledge, unfortunately. I did sit down with the chief recently and asked him, you know, about budgets, and he was nice enough to provide me with the fiscal 17, I believe, the fiscal 18 budgets, for me to at least look at and familiarize myself with. Again, I don't have a lot of, you know, knowledge in that section.
Yeah.
It will be a work in progress, I will say, but, you know, I think you have to formulate the budget around your primary needs. You have to worry about officer safety first and foremost, and the needs of the community in general. You know, there's going to be places, obviously, where we can make cuts. There's probably areas where we're going to have to make increases, based, again, upon officer safety and the needs of the community as a whole. There's more people in this room right now than we've ever had at any of our public budget meetings to go over budgets. So you're right, you know, no one shows up. Anyways, next question.
Follow-up?
Sure.
Is there anything off the top of your head that you see are within the budget now that you would look at?
As far as changes--
Changes.
I think at some point here, we are going to have to look at increased personnel, we're going to have to look at increased cruisers. Again, these are money things we're going to have to look at eventually. There are a bunch of technological improvements we're going to have to look at going forward. We want to be able to phase these things in and not pile them on top all at once. I think you have to be fiscally responsible when you move forward and you make these decisions. And obviously, you know, I'd have to look back and see what the current budget is, as opposed to what budget we may be looking at. We may be looking at the standard, you know, even line, you may be looking at a 5% cut, maybe a 5% increase, a 10% increase, or a 10% cut, so.
Thank you. Rhett, what is the biggest challenge facing the department, and what would you do to face this challenge?
It's a good question. I don't think there are any problems at this point in time that are, you know, very detrimental to the department, nothing that needs immediate change at this point in time. I think there are a number of smaller items that we can change, or I should say, improve upon is probably a better word. As far as, you know, maybe some of the small problems I can think of that we need to deal with, one of them there would be, probably one of them would be the issue we currently have with hire dates. We have an issue right now where hire dates, for some people, they understand they are the date of appointment, they may be an issue where they feel that their hire date, or I shouldn't say their start date, is the day after the academy when they meet all their conditions. We really don't know at this point in time. I think for fairness, we need to address that situation. I think that's one of the more pressing needs at this point in time.
Thank you.
How would you deal with employee issues in your new management role as police chief?
You know, obviously, everyone in the department, I've had an opportunity to work with most of them for a number of years. We are like a family. You know, we do count on each other, you know, to have our backs at all times. It can be tough, but it needs to be fair. If you do things fairly, there can be no complaints on the other end. Okay. All right, so what is the first thing you would change in the Southwick Police Department if you were chief? Again, I'll go back to my earlier answer. I don't think we have anything that needs to be changed immediately. Some of the things I may look at, and, you know, it's really a employee satisfaction type of thing, would be to be able to move shifts on a normal basis, not to be stuck in a shift for a long duration of time, or, you know, not know when you possibly may be able to move. I know we've had issues, obviously, through Labor Council and stuff of that nature, saying that's one of the chief's inherent job, you know, abilities, for him to make assignments. So it would have to be something where, you know, it could be agreeable with both myself, the town, and the union as well.
How will you prepare the bench of future officers and leaders in the Southwick Police Department?
I think I've already been doing that to some extent. I am a field training officer. I was involved with the training of personnel prior to becoming a sergeant, back when I was a patrolman. I've trained a number of the officers over the years. You know, the best way to train them is, you know, basically, they need to be able to be in a situation where they, just give me one second here. and be able to basically say, you know, I want to treat people the way I want to be treated. If you treat people the way that you feel you should be treated, you're going to be able to have much more positive interactions, you're going to be able to establish trust and legitimacy out within the public and the department. As far as, you know, getting people on the bench and ready for future advancement, I think you have to be able to send people to training, and I'm not just talking supervisory training, I'm talking about training that, you know, deals with the everyday issues of life, you know, mental health, substance abuse, things that we deal with every day which are very, very important, you know, for leaders and managers going forward.
Thank you.
Rhett, what is your vision for this department in five years?
I would say in five years, I would like to see a number of improvements. I think we need to, again, look at a number of technological improvements at the department. We need to start looking at things such as body cameras, cruiser cameras, increased usage of our internet website, maybe something along the lines of a Southwick Police Department app where people can report, you know, crimes or be advised of certain happenings in town. Everybody knows people live and die by their cellphones these days. I think that would be a major, major improvement. Additionally, in the next-- Additionally, in the next five years, I would say I'd be looking at, you know, increased staffing, probably some additional equipment and, you know, beyond what I've already mentioned here. And obviously, we're going to have retirements coming up, so we're going to have to sort of get that bench ready, as you stated earlier. That's probably one of the biggest things that we're going to have to face here going forward.
Can I ask a follow up on that, since you brought up the technological side of it? And it just interests me. I'd be interested to hear your take. What do you think the impact on driverless vehicles are going to impact the Southwick Police Department, say, ten years now? Because they're coming.
Oh, yeah.
There's a lot of things definitely coming here. It's one of those great unknowns at this point. I don't know how it's going to shake out. It's like, it's similar to the drones. You know, you're going to have these unmanned drones coming in, doing all kinds of stuff. What happens when they crash? What happens, you know, when they cause an accident? Who do you, who do you find responsible for these devices that are out there? I think unfortunately, it's going to be sort of a situation where you have to let things shake out on their own. We do need to prepare for it. It is coming, but I think we have a little bit of time to do so at this point in time.
Thank you.
Okay. So a lot of these questions are the same, but they're different, you know?
Same, different.
Yeah. What have you, oh, I'm sorry, yes, where am I? What have you done over the course of your career to prepare yourself to be in the chief or to be the chief of this department?
I basically, I started out acknowledging that education was key as far as where I was going to go with, no matter what I did, whether it was police, whether it was phone company, whether it was whatever career I decided I was going to go in. You know, with that degree, I've since, you know, moved forward. I think a lot of my preparation has been on the job, my interactions with people. You know, I can go to all kinds of classes. I can see different philosophies. I can see different styles of leadership. But the biggest, you know, asset out there is one-on-one interactions with people out there, seeing, you know, what's important to them, what they think is wrong, where they think we should go.
Thank you.
What was your worst day in your supervisory position?
Dude, boy.
And this one's not it.
Yeah, this is it.
Man, I wish I could use that one. Boy, I mean, I'll have to think. I mean, I don't dwell on bad days. You guys have all seen my personal history. I generally move forward quickly. It's how I do things. The worst, I really can't even think of a bad day, honestly. I'm thinking hard here. There's been trying days, you know, where you get sent from one call to the next to the next. You know, you have to deal with fatal accidents. There's a number of things that can cause a bad day. We've been lucky enough here where we've never had any serious, serious incident where an officer's been injured or killed. Yeah, I count my blessings for that. But as far as the worst day, I'm going to go with today, I don't know.
Why should we select Rhett Spanish?
Is this the last question?
Depends.
I think you should, you know, select me based on what I bring to the table, my knowledge, my experience, my ability to stay out of conflicts. I think it's important for, you know, a department and the citizens of this town to have a police chief that they can respect and identify with. And I'm sure that in my follow up here, I'm going to discuss that a lot more. I didn't want to forget anything, so I'll basically end with that at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any questions you have from us or anything that you would like to add?
I believe you guys have covered my questions at this point, as far as the rest of the process goes. I do have some packets for you. I will give them to you. I'm going to sort of go through them with you, if that's okay.
Certainly.
Give me one minute while I pull them out of here.
Thank you.
So basically what you see in front of you, it's sort of a supplemental submission to my original resume. It details my image of a successful police chief, why I want to be a police chief, what I've done to prepare myself, what direction I will take, including improvements, what current issues I face in the community, how to go about solving these issues, and why I'm the best candidate for the position of chief of police. Obviously, we've covered some of these issues. I'm going to elaborate on them a little bit more. It's always easy to do that prior than to come here and sort of answer questions on the fly, but being able to answer questions on the fly is an important ability for someone, not only in a, you know, a police situation, but as a chief of police. So what is my image of a successful police chief? A police chief's success is derived from the influence they have over those willingly following them, rather than the power bestowed upon them by their position. A successful police chief must therefore be a leader and a mentor, not just a manager of employees, someone who's able to step into the subordinate shoes and analyze things from their perspective. They should be visible at all times and stand up and be counted, rather than hiding behind others as their actions are an example of how their followers should behave. In order to build trust and legitimacy, a police chief must exude such morals such as respect, fairness, trustworthiness, caring, and responsibility. They must also possess traits such as empathy, loyalty, insight, character, honor, and conviction. A police chief must therefore never allow power, prestige, socialization, or politics to have a place in policing. They should instead strive to be an independent, unencumbered force for positive change, effectively guiding their department through the use of individual abilities, education, and knowledge. When defining goals and objectives for the department, a police chief should involve both members of the public and the police department as a whole, so that everyone involved shares a mutual ownership of the results. Why I want to be the chief of police? Unlike many of the recent interviews in which some of the applicants stated they want to be chief of police in ten years, I did not initially enter the department with that goal in mind. My feeling at that point in my career was that I needed to establish myself first as an officer and then see where my skills and knowledge took me. For the first five years as a full-time officer, I was somewhat uncomfortable and put into a supervisory role. As time passed and my skills and task of knowledge grew, I became increasingly comfortable supervising others when given the opportunity. When the chance to become a sergeant arose, I eagerly and happily applied. After subsequently being promoted, I again decided to let my skills, knowledge, and experiences lead me forward, whether that meant remaining a sergeant or possibly advancing to the administrative level. In the time since my promotion, I have embraced the challenges of leadership and have done my very best to be a respectful, fair, trustworthy, caring, and responsible role model and also a mentor for those officers under my direction. I believe that all our officers are very talented and in a place in the right situation. They'll help the organization achieve something truly special. I feel that I have helped nurture a number of these same officers who will someday lead this department with honor and conviction. Their support and belief in me as a leader and mentor in turn led me to contemplate further advancement. Now with the opportunity of advancement firmly in front of me, I decided what was best for me, my family, the Southwick Police Department, and the community as a whole. In doing so, I had to look at the advantages and disadvantages, both personally and professionally. I spoke with my wife, my friends, my professional mentors, coworkers, and community members. Their initial responses ranged from, "What, are you crazy?" to, "Do you want all that stress?" to, "I think that's great." While some of their initial responses gave me pause, their confidence in my personal character and my ability to effectively manage and lead this department were significant for me personally. While I believed that I possessed both the tools and the talent for the position, I felt I would also need the support of those around me to be truly successful. Based on the overly positive feedback I received, I determined that I have this support and that the positives of the position far outweigh the negatives. It is therefore a great honor and excitement that I have decided to seek the position. What have I done to prepare for the position? We've sort of gone over this, but I'll hit it again. Even though I began my career at the Southwick, even before I began my solid career at the Southwick Police Department, I vowed education and ongoing learning. I knew that advanced degree would not only help me in my day-to-day life, but it would also help me achieve my long-term goals that I've decided to pursue. In addition, I felt that my personal experience as a whole have been instrumental in preparing me for a position that can be highly stressful and require the argument to be cool, calm, and collected while being able to keep focused on the tasks at hand. While I have attended many professional development classes at the supervisory level, I feel that my day-to-day interactions, whether positive or negative, have had a most profound effect on my overall development as a whole. For this position specifically, I have talked to several persons who have attained the rank of chief to gain insight and innate understanding of not only what is expected, but what is required. Most importantly, I mentally accept that such a change in rank and responsibility will be a life-changing event, which will alter my relationships on all levels. What direction will I take the police department? Again, the current police department is by no means dysfunctional and therefore changes can be done gradually using a phased process to ensure a smooth and fiscally responsible transition. In an effort to identify areas which may need improvement or outright change, I made a concerted effort to speak with coworkers, citizens, mentors, and other town employees while also reading numerous publications. One of the first things I examined was the President's Task Force on Twenty-First Century Policing, which identified six pillars that address important aspects of policing and community relations. While many of the recommendations set forth in the report have been addressed statewide by the Municipal Police Training Council or the MPTC, some others may be achieved at the local level. Below is a list of the six pillars with the recommendations that I feel should be addressed by our department. The first is building trust and legitimacy. Transparency and accountability must be had by all those involved. Policy and oversight would deal with community involvement, peer review of critical incidents, shared services between jurisdictions. Technology and social media would involve new technology standards addressing privacy concerns, technology design concerning local needs and those of special needs, transparency and accessibility for community through technology, and exploration of new less-than-lethal technologies. Community policing and crime reduction is the fourth pillar. It involves community engagement and managing public safety, infusing community policing philosophy throughout the organization, protecting the dignity of all persons, neighborhood crime solving, and youth engagement. Training and education is the fifth pillar. It deals in engaging community members in training, leadership training for all, postgraduate education for command staff, social and tactical training, training regarding disease of addiction, crisis intervention, mental health awareness, in addition to higher education for all officers, improved field training and role-playing exercises. Lastly, the study dealt with officer wellness and safety. We would be looking at new wellness initiatives and peer programs such as stress management, employee recognition, exercise incentives, and nutrition counseling. Based on the pillars, I identified several improvements to our department, which I would definitely consider. I would look at monthly nighttime hours as a chief, so that people would have accessibility to him outside your general, you know, eight-to-four schedule that's currently done. Regularly scheduled staff meetings, not only with the command staff, but also with the officers within the department to help the communication, familiarization, and collaboration with other town departments, so we're able to understand what each other does. Standardized conditions of employment, which I mentioned earlier. Updates to our policy and procedures, updates to our police department website, including being able to file certain reports and submissions over the internet. Creation of a Southwick Police Department app to assist in the ease of access for all parties. Possible third-party computer administration to, you know, get back some of our officers back to the street. New community and public outreach programs, such as lecture or educational series, community meetings or a chief's forum, neighborhood crime watches, police explorers program, youth police academy, bicycle safety, and other seasonal activities, such as a summer sizzler, coffee with a cop, chill with a cop, humping carving, and holiday decorating. Enhanced professional development, which would require leadership training for senior patrol officers and additional training on cybercrime. I would also look to improve upon our field training program, so that it follows the San Jose model and make it part of a conditional deployment for all full-time and part-time officers. The reserve program, I would look at additional mandatory training above the current four hours they have a month. I would also potentially look at creating two separate divisions within the reserve program, whether it be reserves and auxiliary or reserves and a special. I feel that the reserves should be a unit that we can draw upon for future hires, whereas the auxiliary or special could be more of a road detail type of organization where retirees or other persons who don't want full-time employment could basically come in, have the experiences, but we're not going to be basically sinking a lot of money into them. The other thing I would look at with the reserve officers is possibly doing a monthly required shift. That would be something that obviously would need to be discussed with the union. The union gets first dibs on all overtime, so for that to not be considered overtime considerations would have to be made. Future long-term needs, there's a lot of equipment that's going to be needed, that's going to need to be replaced over the, you know, next five to 10 years. Going to have to be able to look at creating a schedule that's fiscally responsible and takes into account officer safety. We're going to be looking at additional portable radios, car radios, radio system, radar units, laptops, computers, our phone system, the building furniture, the building itself. I mean, that's more of a building maintenance issue than a police department issue, but the building is now 20 years old. We're going to start having some failures with the infrastructure within the building. Again, we're going to have to look at new and part-time personnel. At some point, we may have to look at minimum manning during certain times of the year, whether it be weekends, major holidays, or storms. And with increases in manning, we're also going to have to look at increases in equipment and vehicles. I believe the last time we increased our fleet was, I think, around 2008. So anytime we actually go down a cruiser, it sort of puts us in a weird predicament. If you go down two cruisers, we definitely have a problem. New technologies I would explore, again, I would look at body and cruiser cams. I mean, those are things that are coming at some point in time. They're probably going to be mandated, so I think we need to get ahead of that curve and start looking at those before, you know, it's mandated upon us. Drones are another interesting technology I think we could have a lot of success with. Plate readers are out there, facial recognition, GPS systems for personnel in cruisers, less-lethal devices, the police department mobile app again, and wireless devices. Again, these are things that I think we need to look at going forward. They're nothing that we need tomorrow or probably even the day after that, but they are definitely things that are on the horizon. Other considerations to be looked at, dispatch, you know, should it be its own department at this point? You know, where do we stand with regionalization? If we go that route, do we have a dark station? Do we have someone sitting in the chair? I mean, these are a lot of very important things that a chief is going to have to sit down and is going to have to think about. down and is going to have to think about. Animal control, you know, that is under the purview of the chief, as is crossing guards. What issues or problems do I think currently face the community? The known issues out there, drug use, opioids for sure, they're a gateway to other crimes, vandalism, D and Es, traffic concerns, recreational issues and lake issues, domestic violence and cybercrime. In addition to the known issues, there's also unknown issues, but how do you define what those are? You're going to have to be able to use the IMC software, citizen reporting, surveys in the internet. How do you go about solving the issues? We can't do it alone. We must build meaningful relationships with the Southwick Police Department, Southwick Town Government, the Southwick community as a whole. Each group must treat one another fairly. They must be invested in maintaining public safety, and they must have mutual respect. Familiarization leads to understanding, which leads to respect ultimately. And to go about solving the issues, you have to listen, you have to plan, you have to implement, monitor, and assess where you want to go. Why I think I'm the best candidate for this position? It is always easy to ask, or is always easy to say that one wants to be chief. It is something different to understand why. If one thinks about their intentions and honestly asks themselves, "Is this the best thing for me, my family, my department, and my community?", the answer is anything short of resembling yes. Then the person is not being fair to themselves, the police department, or the town. In order to make a positive impact, one must be all-in and have the support of not only their family and their peers, but also the community as a whole. In my time as a Southwick police officer, I've interacted with thousands of citizens and have lived by the notion, treat others how you would like to be treated yourself. Generally, if you treat a person with respect, fairness, and caring, you will build trust with that person and legitimize your actions. The same can be said in regard to supervising and leading coworkers. At no time would I ask someone to do something I would not do myself under the same conditions. I believe the principle of leading by example confers a message that no one is in this alone. I also believe respect, fairness, trustworthiness, caring, responsibility in the workplace are keys to maintaining a positive, productive police department. I further trust that employees who feel that they have meaningful input and feel responsibility for their contributions are generally happy in their assignments and buy into their role. I consider a person's individuality as important and value different points of view as beneficial to the overall success of our agency. I am also of the opinion that accountability is critical to our long-term success. I feel that one of my most important strengths is an ability to identify my weaknesses and use them to my advantages rather than permitting them to hold me back. I do not believe I have all the answers. I do not portray myself in that light. While I have my opinions as to how things should be done, I do realize my way isn't the only way, and sometimes there are better, more effective, and efficient methods. I feel that to be generally respected as a leader, one must take the time to listen to those persons involved and show an understanding of their beliefs. I feel that problems are the responsibility of all, those effective, and solutions can therefore come only through a team-oriented effort. I do however realize that all people are self-starters and some need varying levels of encouragement, reward, or award to justify their work. I have been blessed with not requiring outside validation to keep me focused. An occasional thank you will suffice. In reviewing the job description, I have confidence I can perform the essential duties and responsibilities of chief of police, albeit on a slight learning curve. I meet the preferred candidate's educational and prior work experience criteria and possess most, if not all, of the special knowledge and abilities required. I'm also a lifelong Southwick resident and thus am a direct stakeholder in the success of our department. Lastly, in reviewing the pack I submitted as part of my resume, you probably noticed I did not submit a single letter of reference. I chose this route because I felt an important, honorable position such as the chief of police should not be decided by how many individual letters a candidate solicits, how popular they are, what groups they belong to, or who they know, but rather on their skills, knowledge, abilities, and overall potential. As a result of these beliefs, I purposely avoided outside affiliations that may give rise to even the mere perception of a conflict of interest. While I view many private clubs and civic groups as beneficial, worthwhile endeavors, membership can sometimes stir cries of favoritism which can affect the public's trust. I prefer instead to donate and support my causes quietly and without recognition. I believe by staying independent, neutral, and unencumbered, I give the Southwick Police Department the greatest chance of achieving long-term legitimacy and respect. Thank you for this opportunity to interview for the position of chief of police. I look forward to continuing my service to the town of Southwick for many years to come, no matter my position.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Well done.
We're going to grade the book report and we're going to get it back to you.
Do I get a sticker?
There's some spelling errors, but we'll discuss that later.
The water is yours with our company.
Yeah, the water you can have.
This doesn't get recycled?
Well, later, but that's yours. Take care.
Thank you.
You okay here? Wait a minute. Give me just, give me two seconds. Okay, I'm ready.
Next will be Lieutenant Kevin Bishop.
Can we ask if they had a booklet first? So then whatever questions they don't answer, we can. Ask them twice.
He's here, right?
Oh, there he is. Yeah, oh, he's brought his own water. We were short one water.
Ladies, good evening. Sir.
Right down there. Start with seventy-five here at the end. Did you see him? Didi, Mr. Moplin. I'll come to you, Mr. Fox.
Thank you.
Hold on, make it.
Thank you. How are you, Lieutenant?
Very good. Yourself, sir?
Excellent.
Very good.
We have approximately 400 questions for you, maybe 12.
I prepared for 500, so let's go.
Okay, so we have 12, and we're going to each ask a question. At the end, you'll have an opportunity to ask any questions you may have of us, make any statements, claims, whatever. And we have, as you know, four interviews this evening. The board does intend to discuss this matter later this evening, but to be determined if we're going to make an absolute decision this evening or not.
Very good.
You ready?
Yes, sir.
Any tissues, water?
I'm good to go.
You're ready to go.
Yes, sir.
To my left.
Okay. All right. What do you perceive are the chief's major responsibilities?
One of the chief's major responsibilities is to lead his men, send an example for his men, be, I say, a very active member of the community that he works in and hopefully lives in also. He is the leader of the ship, and with the example that he sets for his men is a big part, what I would perceive is his big responsibility, is to set the standard by his own work ethics and his own style, and pass that on to the officers below him.
Okay, thank you.
Since you have worked under several chiefs in the past, what would your management philosophy be like?
I'd be the same philosophy I've had for my whole 30 years with the three areas. My door would always be open. I'm willing to discuss anything with anybody at any point in time. We had an officer leave our department years ago, and he had given a nickname for everybody when he left, and he wrote a little note, and he gave me the name of the devil's advocate. And I think sometimes with a personality like that, I can debate anything with most anybody at any point in time, try and work through the topic. My ambition would be that anybody that comes through that door, no matter what we discuss, and we agree or disagree, we shake hands and we have a drink afterwards. There's nothing personal. We all have differences, you know, on different things, but I still understand that I am still the chief and have to make that final decision when it comes to it. But hopefully, we could all still be as friends, no matter who came through that door. So that would be my management style.
Kevin, as police chief, how will you interact with the community so that the town will really get to know their chief?
Well, I really don't think I need to change my style at all for interacting with the community. If you've known my past and all my history over the years, I've spearheaded many fundraising events for families who have been burnt out of their homes, who've lost family members, who've been injured in our community. A year ago, you know, I saw a task in town where the fireworks funding was a little low at that point in time, so I became involved in that. And to me, that's a big activity, and, you know, we raise some money. I've been involved with this community through Team Justice, between being a soccer coach for the rec center. I don't know how much more I can immerse myself. I know as far as being the chief, we always start thinking ahead of time, what do I do if I was in that role? Some thoughts that I already have already out of the bat is I would reach out to our religious organizations. I would ask if I could come into their churches for a different church every Sunday for like the first seven or eight weeks of being the police chief, introduce myself to the congregation, let them know who their police chief is. Because in today's age, if you look at the TV and you look at the news and major things happen in the community, you see a big relationship between the police department and the religious field out there, because there's a healing process. So at least I would want them to have a name, a face to put together in case they ever needed to reach out to them. Another small thing, and again, I still am a small-town police officer, and it may sound funny, you may chuckle about it, but it's something I would think about doing, being going out to the transfer station for a good month in a row on Saturdays and hand out my business card and shake the hands of the people in our community, and let them know who their new police chief is, and let them know, again, putting a face with a name. So that's how I'd get myself out into the community even more.
I have a follow-up. You mentioned Team Justice. If we selected you chief, and the chief is responsible for motocross and things like that with the promoter over there, and I believe the promoter gives Team Justice free access to the track.
Yeah.
How would you handle that potential conflict of interest?
If it affected the job and, you know, the town attorney or so, Mr. Duprey advised me that that was a some type of ethical issue, I would step down at that point in time from Team Justice. I have a new mentor that's already taken over for me. He's doing all the traveling for me. All I have is the title basically now is the president of Team Justice, but if that became an issue and I was advised by the town attorney, I would step down and turn over the presidency to Mr. Lamro.
Okay, good, thank you.
I know, it's me. It's weird how he asks us. How would you, how would you like to formulate a police department budget?
I asked for money and you give it to me.
Oh.
You're hired!
That concludes the interview. Yeah, who's next?
All right, could you repeat the question again, sir?
Yeah, so basically, we're asking you, how would you like to, it probably should be, how would you formulate a police department budget?
Well, it's a tough one, because I just know the way it is right now. I understand, you know, working with Chief Ricardi, you know, on the budgets and stuff, you know, over the years, and I do understand the budget process of how it works right now. I don't know if you're asking me to formulate a whole new, you know, formula. So I'm going to say, I mean, I'm aware that we have a budget request that has to be in by, you know, December, you know, of each year. I do know we end up meeting with the finance committee with the capital, you know, items, you know, board there. But again, to be studying right off the bat, the first thing a year, you know, if I step into this position, I know it'll be a new fiscal year that I'll be stepping into, which probably was pretty much a prepared budget at that point in time, but I would study that whole budget for that whole first year to try and formulate my own, you know, budget. But as far as coming up with a whole new budget plan and changing the workings of the town hall, it's not an ambition that I'm looking to accomplish. So right now, I would just work on my five-year plan and decide what works best for the town of Southwick and for the Southwick Police Department.
Thank you. Just a quick follow-up. Is there anything off the top of your head that you've seen that you might want to have the finance committee or the board of selectmen think about during the budget?
Think about? Well, again, it's my role over the years of being a computer administrator for the town and stuff, that would be another area that I really would make sure that we're staying on the top edge when it comes to technology. As you know, there's going to be, the future, we're going to be faced with cameras within cruisers, cameras with the officers, so that would be something that I would like to see the technology, make sure we've got the cutting edge, you know, in the future.
All right, thank you.
What is the biggest challenge facing the department, and what would you do to face this challenge?
The biggest challenge? I think it's keeping our officers up to snuff and up to the best mark when it comes to training. There's so many things that change every day in the law enforcement world when it comes to training. The laws are changing continuously, and it's not that we failed in that area, it's just that the challenge is, is just, I've seen it with Chief Ricardi, the constant time of trying to get these guys into these courses that are new and constantly just be right there on top of it, because like I said, the laws come out, the notices that he has to keep up with for policies and procedures because of new laws come out. So it's a challenge, I say, that we're faced with, and he's done a fantastic job, you know, with that. I'd like to continue with that, but I do think it is a challenge faced by any chief is to keep people educated right up to the top line of what's out there.
Follow-up. No, no. I'm still writing. I'll get to you, I'll get to you. Don't push me. How would you deal with employee issues in your new managerial role as police chief?
Well, again, I do firmly believe in, over the years of hearing, you know, how the town is supposed to work, I would go with a progressive discipline approach. It would all start off, unless it's a complete violation of, you know, safety or a violation of a law, it would be the progressive discipline approach where, you know, speaking of first, we'd go with the verbal, you know, verbal warning, documented verbal warning, written warning, and right up through to suspensions and possible termination if the board, you know, so agreed with it, you know, also. But before I get into discipline, I would hope it'd be something that we could work out with the officer first to find out what the issue was, and maybe it doesn't have to be discipline to begin with. It could be reeducation, it could be reassignment, there's other options besides just discipline. But I'm ready to step to that plate if it does get to that point where discipline does need to be handed up.
Now, I'll give you a little follow-up. Do you think that we have any big discipline problem now?
No, sir. All the year, we've got a great police department out there. The officers are, they're self-motivated, they care themselves, you give them directions, you give them the guidance they need. I don't see anybody on my radar right now that's going to be an issue for myself or an issue for the police department in the future.
What is the first thing you would change in the Southwick Police Department if you were chief? Not the second, but the first.
The first, besides Lamborghinis?
Yeah, besides the automotive issue, yeah.
First thing that I would, I see it on there. Wow, first thing that I would change. I think that I would try and change to bring back the memory of every officer. I've been on the job so many years, I've either been involved with the interview process for most everybody on the department when they came through as a reserve and I interviewed them, or when they went through the ranks of becoming a sergeant or becoming full-time. And there's one question that's always asked by any new boots that are coming on board is why do you want to be a police officer? And I think sometimes, and the number one answer we always get is I want to protect and serve, okay? And I think that the thing that I would change, or make sure that we have that pattern, is that we are here to serve the public. We can all, we all have to do our job, we put our lives on the line every day, but sometimes I think that we forget with the service part. When an elderly woman calls and her water line happens to be broken in the basement, yeah, we can turn around and say it's not our responsibility to just call the water department. Well, again, could the officer take a walk down the stairs, at least see if he can turn off the valve, you know, down there? Those are the things that I would like to make sure, not, you know, make that first big change, is to make sure we remember we're here to serve the people.
How will you prepare the bench of future officers and leaders in the Southwick Police Department?
The bench?
The bench.
Okay. Well, we have an FTO program. I want to make sure that we're completely up to snuff on that and make sure our FTO officers are trained and retrained every year. There's trainings that they're supposed to have each year, and make sure that they're setting the right standard for our officers. Again, prepare them for the positions that come, not just prepare them to be an officer on the street, but also prepare them for the next segment, you know, what training they need to become the sergeant, what training they need to become the lieutenant, and right up through the ranks out there, to make sure that they're prepared, because the whole thing should be like the farm team. And these are farm teams, these guys are coming up through the rank, and we need to prepare them for the position. I respect the board tremendously, that you're giving us people in-house the first bite at the apple for this position. And again, that's a compliment to you, the board, Chief Ricardi, to prepare the in-house people that you have right now, you know, for this position. So I would like to carry on that tradition to make sure that we've given them the best training to step up to that next step in their career.
Thank you. Kevin, what is your vision for this department in five years?
The vision? To be one of the best police departments in Western Mass, to continue to grow and become more and more professional and just become, again, one of the best in Western Mass. I think with the group of officers that I would have below me, I think it's a feasible, it can happen, because I have faith in the officers and I have faith in this community that we can still shine, you know, for the town.
So the follow-up would be, were we third now, or where do you think we are?
I'm not going to go for the number. We're there, we're close, we're close. I just want to push it.
Good answer.
We're A right now, I want to get to A-plus.
Okay.
So let me follow up too, because it struck me as odd. Why do you limit yourself to Western Mass?
Well, good point, good point. Well, good point, good point. Yeah, maybe it's because I'm a homeboy and I just think about where I like my roots and where I would like to have a shine. Let's take care of Western Mass before we worry about the country. Not saying it's not on the table, you know?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, so what have you done over the course of your career to prepare yourself to be the chief of this department?
Well, I think the biggest one is going back and getting my education. At 39-years-old, I realized that, back at that point in time, I knew what the job descriptions were and I knew that they had indicated that the chief position was basically, a lot of times it was preferred that you had a master's degree. When I went for the chief's position two times ago, you know, that was one of the preferred things, I knew that I needed to have it, I went and got my, my education. But that's not, that's, that's just a degree that I obtained. To me, it was more what did I do with that degree within, within my years on the job? And I always tried to put myself in positions or take on positions that would put me in leadership positions. Like when I took over the community policing program, I took over the DARE program. Those would put me in positions that I could work with to face any challenges within the, in the department. So I think what it was, when you say what did I do to prepare myself, was to make sure that I was available for whoever my chief was at that point in time to, to make the department look good and to also learn in those positions.
Thank you. Kevin, what was your worst day in your supervisory position?
It wasn't doing, it wasn't supervisory as far as dealing with officers, it wasn't the issues dealing with boards of selectmen or anything. It was working the streets and being in a supervisory position. And this is where I might need my tissue. Is, is I made it through my career for many, many years without ever having to do a death notification. And I still carry it with me to this day. Where I remember a beautiful October, Sunday afternoon, and had to do a death notification to two parents of their 16-year-old kids. And that's tough because there's only two cops working that day and we had to still maintain, we still had to do the, the maintaining of the scene. We couldn't take the boys out of the car. And one of the mothers showed up at the scene. To this day, I remember being on the yellow line with her and, and having to tell her that, you know, that her son had passed away. And then an hour later, I had to go and it was one of our ex-dispatchers had to form him that his son had passed away also. I think that's one of the things that gives me my big commitment to the youth in this community. So it really wasn't a supervisory thing. The supervisory thing, I think, has been very easy for me on the streets because I love working with my guys. I love be, still getting involved with the officers out on the street. But being the supervisor that day fell on my shoulders and that's one of the toughest times. And I wouldn't put that responsibility on one of my officers to do. If you're a supervisor, you need to take that hit and you need to go out and, and do that. So that was one of my toughest times in the supervisory role.
Thank you.
Kevin, why should we select Kevin Bishop chief?
Well, I think basically because you put the time and effort and money into me over my 30 years here. You've paid for intensive training for me to go to. I've taken on every task that I, that I've been asked to take on. I don't think it's a challenge that's been put before me by either this board or by any police chief that I've worked under. I think I'm totally dedicated to this community besides just my community involvement. The things that I've, I've tried to do in my role in the, in the Southwood Police Department, I think, has prepared me, you know, for this, for this position. I've got every requirement that you guys asked on your job posting. I've met it, or I've exceeded it. I think I'm ready for the challenge and I'm ready to step up to the plate for you guys.
That's the 12, Lieutenant. Do you have any questions or anything you'd like to add for us?
No, sir, I do have a statement that I would like to share with you, but no questions for the board at this point in time.
Floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. A small one. Sit back, relax. First of all, I'd like to thank the board for allowing me to interview for this very important position for the town of Southwick. I wish to share a little bit more information with you as to why I think I'm the most qualified candidate for this position. I would like to start with the job posting the board provided for this position. The posting indicated there was required and preferred educational and prior work experience. I would like to point out that I meet and exceed each of those requirements. First requirement was listed as 12 years of law enforcement experience and five years in a supervisory position. I have been employed by this department for over 30 years with 20 of those years in a supervisory position as a sergeant and present as a lieutenant for the past four years. Now, the preferred educational and prior work experience, preferred, was listed as 14 years of law enforcement experience. While I've already stated to you, and now you know, I have more than double the law enforcement experience requirement. The posting indicated that a master's degree was preferred. I obtained my master's degree in 2003. You may ask why I went back to college so late in my life, and the reason is, I was motivated by a past Southwood Police Chief and a past select board member. Both of these individuals I have tremendous respect for and they both informed me that they felt I had the potential to move up through the ranks within the department, but to progress, for progress, I needed to further my education. So in 1999, at the age of 39, I returned to college. Yes, this took a lot of sacrifice, both financially and time away from my wife and daughter. But when you have an understanding and supportive wife and daughter, almost anything can be accomplished. But my education did not stop there. I was, I was fortunate to have served under police chiefs that sponsored me and had the town cover the costs for me to extend, to attend intensive upper management courses. I wish to share a couple of the titles from all those, some of those courses and seminars. Leadership for the New Millennium, Police Command Training, Police Supervisor Training, Contemporary Issues in Law Enforcement, Accountability and Discipline of Employees, Management Rights for Law Enforcement. A five-day course that I was so very unfortunate to attend that was sponsored by the FBI entitled Northeast Law Enforcement Executive Development. And most recently, in September, I attended a very important training for any officer stepping into the position of police chief, Firearms Legal Update. This course covers the very confusing and stringent issues involving issues of firearm, firearm permits. And so as you can see, the town of Southwood spent a lot of money and time comparing me for the position of police chief, which I'm very thankful for. Now, I would like to speak about my career at the Southwood Police Department. I've always looked at myself as a problem solver and someone who gets things done and never afraid of any challenge that was presented to me. I will now show you some of those examples with you. When the chief wanted the DARE program started in our town, I took on the role as the DARE program coordinator. And with the help of fellow DARE officer Sanders, we created one of the best DARE programs in Western Mass, or all over the country, I should say. The next extent was, the next request was to implement the community policing program in our community, and I was given the title of the community policing coordinator. On a side note, the wording "community policing program" I never liked. I've always felt if a police officer was performing his duties, as he should, he was already performing community policing daily on his shift. And I can tell you that if I'm chosen as the next chief, that that thought press will be implemented throughout the ranks. Okay, now back to being given the task of implementing the community policing program. Funding was an issue. I attained thousands of dollars in federal and state monies, which gave me a great education in seeking, obtaining, and working within budget restraints. Now, with the funding in place and fortunate to have many great officers to work with, I was able to create a very successful community policing program. And one program I'll always be very proud of was the implementation of the First Citizen Police Academy that was first hosted by Officer Maza and the academy still continues to this day. Other challenges that I was faced during my career, when the chief needed a backup sexual assault investigator, investigator, I stepped up. When we had a murder occur in our community and our lead investigator had to leave the town the next day, I was given a task of assisting in this investigation with the Mass State Police and Hartford, Connecticut Police. And because of my willingness to step up, I was awarded a citation for my involvement with this case. When I, when it was decided dispatch liaison was needed between the police and fire and dispatch, I was given this task and feel a lot of communication has improved over the years between these departments. So as you can see, I've not limited myself to just one aspect of law enforcement, but I've been involved in every aspect of law enforcement for the Southwood Police Department during my career. Being involved in all these many different duties and responsibilities have shown my leadership ability because I needed all of my fellow officers to accomplish these things. And by leading them, we've accomplished a lot over the years. I am aware the select board have received, I'm aware the select board may have received a few email recommendations for me from this position. I would like to share one quote that I never knew had been spoken about me until I read the recommendation. The person shared in her letter that she had lost a family member in a motor vehicle accident and that I had given this person guidance and answered questions she had about the accident and instructed her how to contact the state police and seek further information from them. She did this and was involved in a six-month investigation with them. And once it was concluded, she states that the lieutenant she had been working with made a statement to, to her about me that she will carry with her the rest of her life during her healing process. The statement made by the lieutenant was, Lieutenant Bishop went above and beyond in the explanations of procedures he had reached out to you with. He is a true representative of the badge he wears and obviously lives by. He's an example setter for all of us. I share this with the board so that you will know that if I'm chosen for this position, that this type of quote I want spoken not of myself, but of all the officers that will serve under me. And I firmly believe I'm chosen for the position of police chief, this is the type of police department you will have, a police department that is an example setter for all. I thank you for your time and for your opportunity to come before you. One more, please?
Thank you.
Merry Christmas to you and families. Hello, everyone? Yes, sir.
Merry Christmas. Yes, sir. You okay with a break?
What was that?
Five-minute break, or we just keep?
Yeah, I'll keep.
We have a mugshot, I think I'm ready to shoot down at the police station.
They should be in the lineup somewhere.
It's in the post office.
Who's next?
How are we doing on time? Seven minutes behind, we're doing okay.
One guy took 10 minutes, one guy took 11.
Well, the next interview is with Detective Sergeant Robert Landis.
There you go.
Yeah, we make them walk around. Just in case, Sergeant.
Tissues for your crying.
Yeah, if it comes to that.
So what was the bet? The guy that could shake all of our hands without having to go on each side wins, right?
Well, that's okay.
And so far, so far, no one's won, so.
We got that jolly green giant.
Yes, I was gonna say, if we do, we might have big problems on our hands. Detective Sergeant, we have approximately 12 questions for you with some, maybe some follow-ups and so on and so forth. At the end of our questions, we'll be able to answer hopefully any questions or input that you may have. And then after our interviews this evening, the board does plan to discuss this. I don't know yet if we're gonna make a decision this evening on this very important decision.
Okay.
Are you ready to go?
I'm ready to go.
You sure?
I'm sure.
Okay, double checking. To my left, sir.
All right. How do you perceive, what do you perceive are the chief's major responsibilities?
Well, certainly it's, you know, the financial part of it, we're just gonna be allocated X amount of dollars, whatever you guys deem appropriate at that time. So overseeing that and how it's implemented is extremely important because of the effectiveness of our programs, our community outreach programs, all, everything comes with a cost. So it's important to be able to put out a quality program and keep those finances, you know, under check at all times. Certainly, the morale of the police department's huge. One of the things that most people don't see, you know, with police work is, they always see the police at their door, we answer the calls, our guys do a fantastic job. What they don't see is what happens within the four walls of the department. Those are, you know, personnel issues. Everybody may have some, has something different going on and, and those are real important things that the chief needs to handle because to get your mission out there, you gotta have guys behind you doing, doing that, not distracted with other things that are going on. And it's, to have that type of structure within the four walls is really important to put out a big package. Obviously, those are the priorities. Thank you.
Follow-up. How is our morale?
I think our morale is good. I mean, we all have struggles, we all go through different things. We're, we're human, right? So we have our own little units, people that you have more in common with than others. And so you tend to, to maybe discuss things with those individuals more so than, than other people. But I work in a lot of departments across the, handling county, from the DEA, FBI, our local agencies with my drug task force stuff. And I see the problems that these guys are dealing with and you close your eyes and you're sometimes listening to the same story. It's not unique to any one particular place, but they're, they're, they're regular struggles. People bring with them their, their home issues and stuff like that. But back to your question, the morale with our department, I think, is fairly, fairly good, really good compared to a lot of places that I've seen.
Okay. Since you have worked under several chiefs in the past, what would your management philosophy be like?
I think with everything that I do, everybody I've ever even worked with, is I like to take a little bit of each of their dynamic, see what works well with them, how well those things work with, with the personnel, and how well they're received in the community. And then I have my own way of doing things as well, so, you know, it's just the way, you know, I am, how I approach people, I talk to people, how I deal with and the effort that I give forward. So I think you would see a little bit of everybody in me and hopefully the best of everybody.
Bob, as police chief, how will you interact with the community so that the town really will really get to know their chief?
Well, I think the success of the chief is certainly the success of his men. So with everything that we do, visibility is so important. The guys being out there, people seeing the cruisers, going through the neighborhoods, continuing with our community outreach programs, which really are all handled by the individuals themselves. They're teaching the classes, they're out there doing it. And I think certainly the chief needs to be on top of that, supporting it, keeping tabs on how well it's doing. But those are the guys that are really the face of the department. They're the ones out there all the time. So that's kinda how I see the, the, the police chief. And with their excess, success, certainly the, the chief would be successful as well.
A quick follow-up, and it's nothing really to do with that question. You're detective and a sergeant.
Correct.
Where were you first?
I was a sergeant first.
And then a detective?
I was a patrol sergeant first and then, then when the chief went to lieutenant, then I became the investigator.
Okay, thank you. How would you like, I'm sorry, yeah, so it says, how would you like to formulate a police department budget? Or how would you formulate a police department budget?
Well, I'm gonna tell you that I wouldn't say it's a weakness. It's certainly gonna be a challenge because it's gonna be a new part of my career. You know, as the investigator, you know, I see certain programs that are extremely important, such as the opiate problem. And I'd like to see some of the budget money work into those programs. That could be through our school resource programs as well, though. And that, as I'm saying, I, it could be, it would be through our school resource, can be through our youth challenges programs. Those are, are key fundamentals because a lot of our calls for service are based on the different types of addictions, our property crimes, certainly the, the addiction themselves, whether it be medical calls. So they, there's a lot of cost associated with that, with how we respond. So to get it on one end, hopefully will maybe alleviate on the other. So I certainly prioritize, you know, pretty much, there's, there's basic stuff that we're not gonna get around. Certainly, we have to fill the patrol shifts, we have our lake that needs to be dealt with in the summertime. And so it would really be, just like I do in an investigation, is I start right with the base. And I look at what I got, I get, and it would be monies to begin with, and I start with, with the, with the, the foundation and prioritize and build from there and, and put the best budget together based on our priorities and what we can afford.
Follow-up, since you brought up the drug issue, and I don't know the answer to the question, but sitting in the seat you sit in, where do you think most of our calls are going today?
different types of addictions, our property crimes, certainly, the addiction themselves, whether it be medical calls. So they, there's a lot of costs associated with that, with how we respond. So to get it on one end, hopefully, will maybe alleviate on the other. So I certainly prioritize, you know, pretty much, there's basic stuff that we're not gonna get around. Certainly, we have to fill the patrol shifts. We have our lake that needs to be dealt with in the summertime. And so it would really be, just like I do in an investigation, is I start right with the base. And I look at what I got, I get, and it would be monies to begin with, and I start with the foundation and prioritize and build from there and put the best budget together based on our priorities and what we can afford.
Follow-up, since you brought up the drug issue, and I don't know the answer to the question, but sitting in the seat you sit in, where do you think most of our calls are going today? Is it the elderly woman that needs to cross the road? Or is it the drug issue? Is it the break-ins? Where?
Well, I mean, we have a lot of quality life of calls.
Yeah.
Certainly. It can be from the person next door with too many cars in the yard that are unregistered, and the guy is doing, making a chop shop in his backyard, and it's huge for that one dynamic. But then you even have the Sawmill Park, which is, the calls for service there are ambulance-related, medical calls.
Yeah.
And we're getting a lot because of the identity theft and the scam stuff is really affecting all of our community. Certainly for the elders, it's a huge thing for them. So there's a whole.
It's all over.
It's all over the place. Our town is just, we're, we've got such a different demographic makeup. We have citizens that have all different kinds of needs. And so the calls for service are all over the place.
Okay, thank you.
What is the biggest challenge facing the department? And what would you do to face this challenge?
Well, technology is huge because it's ever-changing, and it's so expensive. Certainly, the community, and as we see in the news, they want us to be as transparent as possible, as we should be. But being able to do that and be cost-effective is extremely difficult. One thing that we've been just kind of looking at lately is our, is cameras for the cruisers, and then body cams maybe down the road. I think, my opinion, is it's gonna happen. I mean, whether at some point in time, you're gonna see legislation say, you're gonna do it, and hopefully, the funds will be more available through grants and different means. But right now, the, it's just so, the cost of it is just, is crazy. And the ability to store the data that you would have to store or to retain is way out there as well. I mean, I know there's some private companies that are selling, like, your stuff will go to them for retention and things like that, but it's, I mean, and you really probably need to minimum looking at six months of retention for anything. We're trying to do that now with our camera systems at the PD that we're upgrading at the moment. But the technology is huge because it's necessary, but the cost associated with it is a lot for a town to bear.
Just a quick follow-up, and I don't know if you can answer the question. What are other departments doing as far as storing time?
Some are approaching that. AGWAM, because of, as you know, they gained some revenue through some asset forfeiture as we did.
Yeah.
And they upgraded a lot of their equipment and to include their ability to store, I think it was up, at least up to a year. It might be, they might even have longer. But there, you know, some of the things that we had looked at, you're looking at $160,000, $200,000 for an entire system to be put into your PD, and it's, it's not gonna happen. The reality is, you know? So those are some major hurdles that need to be addressed. I think as the need comes more and more that the public and legislature are saying, you guys are gonna need to this, this is gonna be the requirement, you'll see more people out there selling the stuff. I think prices will come down, or at least in other means of maybe leasing might be another viable option.
So if I could follow-up, since I asked one of the other applicants the same, your take on how driverless cars are gonna impact the Southwood Police Department 10 years out from now? I mean, a lot of our activity today is centered around motor vehicle activity and enforcement, and how does that change that? And they're coming.
Certainly, there's a huge educational process for the officers, knowing those cars, knowing how they react, because they're gonna be in accidents, people are gonna get hit by them. Not that it's any fault of maybe the car, but pedestrians, bicycles, it's just the way it is. When you don't have that human in that car, there's a whole different dynamic. So that's gonna be a financial challenge for us. And then, you know, you don't have the person, you're not citing the person anymore. Now what are you doing? Citing the manufacturer for defects in the car? Are there operations within the car, like black boxes per se, that you're gonna have to write search warrants for to obtain information because they're owned by the manufacturer? So when you do have these bad accidents, it's gonna be huge. It's not gonna happen overnight, that's for sure. But those are definitely some of the hurdles that you would have to deal with when you're starting to introduce that into our community.
The speeding ticket revenue.
Exactly.
Exactly.
I mean, exactly. Goes away.
And I'm sure that special yellow paint we're gonna need on the road, that 3M is gonna develop, it's just gonna be through the roof, right? To keep that car in check.
We don't get our streets lined straight at Southwood.
Oh, that's right.
State is, yeah.
Giving up on that.
Giving up on that.
Sorry about that.
Inside show. Anyway. Bob, how would you deal with employee issues in your new managerial role as police chief?
In many ways, I have dealt with, I've had to deal with them. I've had to bring some issues, you know, to the chief, which, some of which resulted in internal affairs investigations, which I do. But I really don't see a problem with it. I mean, I think the guys know me well enough that if they've done nothing wrong, there's not gonna be an issue. There's no issues at all, and back them 110%. If they were negligent, irresponsible in any way, enacted outside the color, the scope of their position, then certainly, there's gonna be whatever our policies dictate at the time for what they did wrong. From a verbal warning and documentation, all the way up to, it could be suspension, depending on the severity. Fortunately, in some, in the internal affairs investigations that I've done, 99.9% of the time, the officers have been on the right. It was just having to deal with the public and explain to them the perception of the officer at that time and why they acted in the way they did, and hopefully, they walked away with a mutual respect for what we do and not just disgruntled like all the cops just didn't deal with it. So back to the question on how I would deal with the employee, it's just fair. Good.
What is the first thing, first 10 minutes of the first day, first thing you'll do? What's the first thing you'll change in the Southwood Police Department if you were chief?
Nothing. Not the first 10 minutes. No, I, again, back to.
I was joking, of course.
Yeah, okay.
I'll give you a half a day.
All right. Even in a half a day, I think that, I think what's important is you need to bring everybody in, all the administrators, administrators, because we're all response, we all wear different hats. Look at everything that we're doing, and it's gonna take a lot more than a day.
Oh, yeah.
Certainly. But, because we're doing a lot of things very, very well. But it would be now, how do I, how do we tweak? You know, always looking to see how I can do something better. I've never written a search warrant the same way, I've never done an investigation the same way. Things are always developing, ever-changing, so I'd be looking for, okay, we're doing this really well, but can we do it better? And that's what I'd be looking to do over the course of several weeks, more than one day.
How will you prepare the bench of future officers and leaders in the Southwood Police Department?
I would, certainly, I've been very fortunate with a lot of the real successful investigations. But it was because I was given the tools to do it. And, and the latitude to do it as well. So I think that's the biggest thing that you need to do for the guys to succeed, prepare them for the future, is give them the tools so they can go out there and do the job that they need. Give them the latitude to make the decisions that they need to make, and certainly back them, add advice. Because of the things I've done, I think I have a lot of firsthand knowledge through mistakes of my own, or mistakes I've seen others make, certain scenarios that plow they played out in court. So I believe, to your question, to prepare, you know, giving them all those tools and the different avenues is gonna help them succeed down the road. And to take my job. Take my job. That would be, that would be the ultimate chore. And so I'm just preparing.
What is your vision for this department in five years?
Certainly, to continue with our outreach programs. I think the community relations, those are definitely another foundation where we do really well. Gives us our chance to get our faces out there with the people that we normally don't interact with. I'd like to see us form a triad. It's a form of relationship between the senior community and the police department, but it also incorporates the district attorney's office, it incorporates the sheriff's department, health services, and generally, an officer's assigned as kind of like that liaison with the seniors. We already are doing some types, some different types of trainings where we'll go out to Sawmill Park, or we may have it here at the senior center, and we'll do scams, identity fraud, things where they're really well-received. A lot of seniors can't get out, or for whatever reason don't make it, but I think for us to come to them and having these resources, so when there is, much like the elderly, sometimes we're doing with the elderly abuse and the different things, where we have the district attorney's office, sheriff's department, elder services, everybody is one little community, it makes that transition and the experience for the elder much, is much more acceptable. I know Franklin County, I was part of a program up there years ago when I worked in Deerfield. It's already something that's in place, so I'd like to expand on our community outreach stuff with that. The other thing, too, is being that we wear so many hats, it takes a lot of guys off the roads for a significant amount of time to take care of these administrative responsibilities. And they need to be done. I mean, the sides of the department we are, everybody has to do something. So our time on the road is very important. One way we could hopefully alleviate, we're still gonna have to do that, but there's so many times where you're also getting called in for calls, like somebody just needs a motor vehicle accident, or it's a scam. Something that, you really don't need that one-to-one interaction at the time, and what they, what some departments are using is a form of electronic reporting. And you can do that through, like, our Facebook page, where, you know, the person can, the dispatcher can just direct them to the Facebook page if they have the ability to get online. And it is one of these types of calls where you don't need the face-to-face. They can file their accident report right there, they can file a stolen bicycle right there, something that really wasn't gonna require any follow-up. And when you go over the course of the year and you look at the numbers of calls that we take for these types of things, significantly could increase the amount of time that we're on the road out there, you know, visibly, whether it be deterrent, you know, again, being visible deters crime, slows down the motoring public, it's, you know, it's what we do. It's a real important asset that we have, so I think electronic reporting would be really well. I think the responsibility to school resource officer, as great a job as Mike is doing, I'd like to see our youth challenges partnership with him and get, the DAREs, the stuff that DARE has always presented, it's still out there, some of it's outdated, but it's kind of, we've kind of gone in a different direction there. But I'd like to see some more getting into the high schools, and especially with our opiate challenges, it's really important for these kids to understand what the signs and symptoms of these opiate problems are, because if they're not directly affected by it, I guarantee it's a family member, a friend.
Oh, yeah.
Somebody in the neighborhood, somebody they know. So if you could just be at least a student enough to see a particular sign, symptom that you could say to somebody, hey, I got concerns for this kid, or whatever, it could, I believe, I know would help. So I'd like to see that program be within the next five years. I would like to see our dive team and the fire department joining together and pull our resources together. We both have a separate set of skills that are really good, and we work great together. Putting those skills together, I think financially would be much more beneficial for us. When we go to these scenes and everything, we kind of, we all work together, but we don't train together. And I think bringing the two units together is just gonna give us a lot more capabilities. So I'd say those are a good portion of what I'd be looking to see happen in the next five years.
Got a lot of great ideas.
Yeah. What have you done over the course of your career to prepare yourself to be the chief of this department?
Certainly, there's some things early in my life that I just, they hadn't even come to mind, and I would say that was when I joined the military. You know, that taught me, you know, certainly, discipline, structure, you know, how to identify, you know, problems, how to utilize resources to fix those problems. The military's all about the team atmosphere approach, and certainly, what we do, you could never do by yourself. You need everybody pitching and working together. So I think that was unconsciously kind of my staple. I had, prior to the military, I was, I went to Westfield State for criminal justice. Shortly after, I had moved back from California after I got out of the military, I moved back to Westfield State, continued with my college degree. From there, I joined the Granville Police Department, and while I was going to school, and self-sponsored to the academy. Once, I spent a year in Deerfield when I came here, I continued in my college, and then an opportunity presented itself at the surprise of pretty much everybody. I had taken the sergeant's exam at the time because I wanted the college credits, and there was three other candidates with me, much more senior than I, and I ended up getting the job after just being here four years. And so there was some hardship with that because there was not some, there were some hurt feelings. But it was bomber, Chief Lombard at the time, because I was, I was thinking about not taking the position. Just merely because I just felt a seniority issue and all the dynamics involved in this so early in my career, and he had told me that, you know, you needed, you need to do this. So he obviously had the faith in me at the time. So that was an important decision that I made. And then the next, I became the chief investigator about four years after that, and I had another important decision with regards to my education because the amount of work that this position takes and the training that I was sent to and still get to, there's no way that I could have done college and this job. Something would add a gift. There's no, you know, it was just, I thought, responsibility, it's probably just a pressure I put on myself, but that was a choice I made, so, but that certainly helped my progression professionally, I feel.
Right.
That decision. So I'm retiring today.
Ta-da. Thank you.
So what was your worst day in your supervisory position?
I can't say I've really had a worst day. I mean, you know, this is, for the 20 years, I've never known how to work, you know, it's just, it's, you know, you have hurdles, you have struggles. I mean, I would say those worst days are your best challenges, and I think that you work through those challenges, and it's nothing you do by yourself. Again, we all go through these challenges, whether it be a, you know, a real bad assault, a family matter, but I can't tell you that I've had a worst day, just big challenges.
Why Bob Landis, why should we make you chief of police?
Well, I've worked with all of you at one point in time, so you kind of know a little bit about what you're getting. Certainly, there's no smoke and mirrors. It's, it is what it is, I guess, as they say. I'm honest, I'm gonna give you 110%. You know, I think, you know, for the most part, the guys, you know, at least respect my work, my work ethic, and, you know, it's something I'm gonna bring every single day. And, you know, I've always put the job before myself, and I would continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's your 12 questions, sir.
Yeah.
So we're halfway done. Do you have any questions for us, or anything that you'd like to add to this process?
I had written something, but to be quite honest with you, I really think that we answered this stuff. I mean, yeah, I actually had six pages of something prepared that I could kind of go over and hip, but you know what? I was comfortable that you guys hit on everything that I wanted to bring forward, and I appreciate this time. I mean, I think called four of us, I mean, this is, to be able to sit before you and go for the most ranking position in the police department is an accomplishment for all of us. So with that, I thank you. I have no questions.
Well, thank you very much.
All right.
I'll block.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Can you pay me a few more?
Yeah.
Do you like that?
Thank you. Thank you.
You guys are just.
Still doing all right?
Yep.
On time, you're doing good.
Are we on time?
Yep.
It's someone like us. Me, Dick Morris.
Just gonna trigger that app, huh?
Yeah, no one's in it, right? And alphabetically, the next. And alphabetically, the next one is Sergeant Kirk Sanders.
Yeah.
It was all, yeah.
See? He couldn't do either, so, that's good.
He was so close, so far.
Right? He would've, he would've reached.
I think he could've reached.
Yeah.
How are you this evening?
I'm doing fine.
Excellent.
Before we start, I'd like to make the comment here.
Absolutely.
I'm here tonight to inform the select board that I am withdrawing my name from the process for chief of police position. It would not be realistic for me to seek this position when I have less than three years left of my career, but I thank the board for giving me this opportunity. I am asking the select board to allow me to make a brief statement.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay. I've been working for Southwick Police Department since July 1st of 1978, when I started as a reserve officer, for nearly 40 years ago. I feel I've been a lucky person to be involved with the DARE program, being a safety officer, and be involved in community policing. Throughout my career, it's never been about me, but I, but how I could best serve my police department, more importantly, my community. During those 40 years, I've had worked with four police chiefs, Charlie Wolf, Henry LaBumbart, Mark Kornicki, and David Ricardi. Hypothetically, if I were a fourth select board member, gotta get used to that, that used to selectmen, I would be looking for certain qualifications in a chief of police. I believe a chief police, a chief of police must have the following skills: knowledge of law, leadership ability, management, administrative skills, able to work with others, especially with other town departments, to know that, and to know that this person would always take action in the best interest of the town and not himself, not oneself. A chief of police must also have a moral standard, he must be truthful and honest, must be, have the respect of his fellow officers. More importantly, he must be ethical and have integrity. What I'm trying to say here tonight is that making this decision for an important position in this town, that we need to keep the level of professionalism we presently have. For the past four and a half years, Chief David Ricardi has raised the bar by working tirelessly for your select board, for our department, and for the town of Southwick. In conclusion, I am saying that this appointment should not be politicized or a popularity contest, but it should be about whether the person could do that job it demands. You owe it to the police department, but more importantly, you owe it to this community, the town of Southwick, to make the right choice. And thank you again for having, giving me the opportunity to apply for this position, and for allowing me to have the time to make this statement. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you very much, sir.
You wanna go over the questions though, just to get your input? Because I'd love to get, would you like to go over the questions? I would love your input regardless. Oh, seriously? Let's just ask them the questions.
If you want.
Yeah, that'd be great. What would you perceive are the chief's most major responsibilities?
Well, there's a lot of, there's a lot of responsibility. He, the chief of police carries a lot of weight with just the town alone, with all the different departments, and, and reaching out to other communities as well, working with other police departments. I think, like I said, you've seen the last four and a half years with Chief Ricardi, what he has done and what he has accomplished. He has saved the town a lot of money, a lot of aggravation by being there for you folks, so.
Over the years, like you said, four chiefs you've worked with, what would, what would have your philosophy been like? You take a pick of each one of those guys?
Well, Charlie was an officer's person, a man's man.
Yes.
He truly was. One of the best bosses I ever worked for. Henry, same thing, I knew, again, I worked with Henry when he was a sergeant, worked with him on midnights. Again, they all had different qualities, and, but I feel that the last four and a half years, again, Chief Ricardi has brought it up to a different level, that I think you realized it and you have seen over the years, absolutely.
What do you think the biggest challenges ahead are?
Well, the biggest challenge that we got going on right now is, right now, we have a few young officers that we're getting through, and I think another challenge is that we need to get our reserve force up to snuff. It's, it's obviously, we gotta get going with that, but again, we got young officers that we're working with, and I, I have a great time working with young officers, I really do. They do a good job, and they, they're out there to do, to honestly do a good job out there for the town.
Thank you. Those are the only ones that I'm dying to hear your input on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry. I, I, that's great, and Kirk, you're one of the first people I met when I came to this town, and, wow, one of the few times, I'm kind of at a loss for words. I wanna thank you for submitting for this role. I wanna thank you for your service for the town and all that you do for this town, not just as a policeman, you're a very valuable citizen and very highly regarded member of this community. And for that, I just wanted to give you my personal thanks, and, and even just for almost 20 years ago now, just being the welcoming guy, that, one of the first people I met when I came in town.
Working with you was, with the planning board.
And, you know, time on the planning board and so on and so forth, and you're a gentleman, and I wish you all the best.
Thank you.
Ditto.
Again, thank you, don't worry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carl has a cold, he better wash that.
Do the action photos outside.
Thank you, sir. We're gonna take a couple of minute break here, let's do that. Okay? Take a five-minute recess at this point.
Seven twenty-five. Twenty, no.
Welcome back. Welcome, welcome back.
Look at that, seven thirty on the nose. So we have a joint meeting with the planning board regarding the associate member. The associate member is jointly appointed by this board and the planning board, and we have applicant.
It's in your meeting packet.
Working right up to it, right?
It's not in there, it's in your meeting packet.
Of course it's not.
Any particular spot?
Yeah, right in the middle usually, there you go.
This personnel?
Here it is. Mr. Spina?
Yeah, oh, this thing.
This thing.
I always wondered what this was.
It's all your appointments.
See, when we change over to a booklet, we won't have these.
Mr. Spina?
Yes.
How are you?
How are you?
You know what you're signing up for?
Did you go to a planning board meeting? No, last, well, two weeks ago.
And you're still here?
I'm still here.
God bless you.
What about those 12 questions?
We had 30 for that. Okay, do you have any questions for us?
You're not gonna put them in the hot sheet?
Yeah, oh yeah, come on up.
Oh, yeah, see, by all means.
Turn the spotlight on.
Run, run.
So, you're gonna go more than one meeting?
Yeah, absolutely.
It's like twice a month?
Yep, every two weeks.
No way she, she checked with your children?
Yep.
Your other half?
Wife is good.
Everyone's good? They want you out of the house?
They're good, they're happy with that, exactly. Increase the cadence every three days.
Someday you may make a decision that someone's not gonna like, you okay with that?
Happens every day, unfortunately.
Oh, good, good, you're right off to the right start, yeah, good.
Yeah.
Lot of stress. You're okay? It's, you gotta let them know now.
We didn't vote them in yet, geez. What's that?
With this protection program?
No, it's unavailable to the planning board.
Yeah, so that's the back door entrance, that's where it stops.
So the, I was fortunate, I actually served in the role as the associate on the planning board for several years, for deciding to, gone completely crazy and ran for election to the planning board a couple of times, but it's a valuable spot. It's an opportunity to learn the rules and regulations for zoning in the town of Southwick and subdivision control. From the looks of things, you're heading into a busy season with the planning board, we're actually gonna have a potential subdivision coming in that hasn't, they haven't had one in almost a decade, I think, right? Nine years, eight years?
Oh nine, we had this, that one up on the hill, and we had one behind Big Line.
Subdivision, right, correct, so it's been a while.
And that board as it sits, hasn't seen one.
This, yeah, this board as it sits, hasn't seen one.
Yeah, Marcus might have done sketches, but that's about it, yeah.
But as the associate, you know, you're gonna, you know, sit through a lot of meetings, get, be able to give your input, unfortunately, you don't often vote unless a member is unable to or whatever, but it's an excellent, you know, we talked, I don't know if you're here for any of the police interviews, we talk about the bench, it is a great place to learn, and it's a great opportunity. That being said, I think it is a, it's a joint appointment, do you need a motion for that?
It's a roll call vote.
I'll nominate David.
I'll second that.
Motion's made and seconded.
Now it's a roll call.
Now it's a roll call vote.
Unless there's any other nominations.
Anybody else in the trusted out here, anybody? Nope, look at that.
Okay.
We tried, we never had this many people before.
So if you, from the planning board, why don't we do the planning board first? If you could just state your name as a member and your vote.
Michelle Legerman, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Marcus Phillips, aye.
Michael Doherty, aye.
Wes Fox, aye.
Doug Mogan, aye.
Joe Diddy, aye. Welcome aboard.
Bad news, sir, you're the associate on the planning board.
It's a great, great board.
Would you have to see Michelle Hill and get sworn in before you attend your next planning board meeting?
Which is tomorrow.
Which is tomorrow, so you have...
It's tomorrow night.
She's open 8:30 to 4:00.
You need to give me a chance to...
Can you make it?
If you're gonna bring the coffee and donuts.
If not, we can, let us know.
Yeah, let me just, yeah, let's see.
And we'll make it happen somehow.
What town you plan to...
We could always have the assistant come to your meeting too.
I have to know if I have to before this, for you.
Yeah.
I mean, I'll do it whenever it's convenient for you.
Yeah, it'd have to be the first thing or last thing. Four o'clock is when she leaves?
They leave at 4:30.
4:30. How long does it take?
10 seconds.
Like, before I get there, like, 4:20, that's probably good.
Yes, and if that's what you're gonna do, I'll let them know.
Why don't you give Cindy, your telephone number?
Yep.
Can you coordinate with Michelle?
Yeah, I've got your number, I'll call you in the morning.
Okay, do you have my...
On your cell?
Cell phone number, yeah.
I'll call you at 53527, 5377, something like that.
5373404.
5377.
Yep.
I'll call you in the morning.
Okay, sounds good.
A little after 8:00. No? I'll call you at 9:00.
That's better, yep, just so we'll be able to get things lined up. Appreciate it, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, we got... I'll do, yeah, you'll fall asleep.
It's your pleasure, go back to the action folder.
Yeah.
He's falling asleep, we gotta, we gotta speed it up. He wants me to go sit.
No, we don't want you breathing in this direction.
Okay.
Trying to catch up.
In charge of this monument and go ahead as we discuss that.
Yeah, it's gonna come up at the end, right?
Yeah.
Under new business?
Yeah.
Okay. So, item 3A is a warrant article, COA revolving, so I assume, Mr. Steinhardt, this is to establish a revolving fund like all the other revolving, revolvings?
Yeah, this is just one of those many ones, and this, of course, is based upon that house numbering, the signing, where they want to expand that program. So this is something that you would okay the town attorney to draft, so it's back before you would okay to go on a future special town meeting, whenever you set the date for.
Are you need a vote on that, or is that...
Yeah, it's just to put it on the next warrant.
I'll make a motion to put it on the next warrant.
Second?
Because they would like it, they don't wanna wait until May, so if you can do it sooner, that's when they want it.
Don't sell, pass, to close. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is just a signature from, we voted on this last time.
Yeah, and we also, we're going to make sure that other board secretaries get the same 13.08, including cemetery.
Okay.
Which is coming up next for a vote.
Batter up, 5A.
Yep. So, just do that at 1308, too.
Do we have...
The next recommendation from Sharon Horsett.
Okay.
The person's already floated.
That's 4A.
I'm on 5A.
Do we have to approve this?
It's attached. Yep, the recommendation.
Because I just sent it down, and I need 4A back.
Since that was discussed in executive session, do we need to take a public vote on that?
On the other one?
Yes. I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that's these.
That's what we signed, yes.
Right, and then 5A is the same, but it's for the cemetery commission, because they now have the vacancy.
Erica's last name?
Baker.
Baker.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that's these.
That's what we signed, yes.
Right, and then 5A is the same, but it's for the cemetery commission, because they now have the vacancy.
Erica's last name?
Baker.
Baker.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Shirt lift. Coming down.
I'm in now.
I'm good.
The next is, yes, okay.
That's for the bridge design?
Yep, that's for the Munbrook shirt lift bridge.
Where's that one located?
It's down there, Seth Kellon's house, right before the...
That's the, oh yeah.
It's a real old one.
Yes, it is, and narrow.
You know, you used to live over by it.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, before Amberleaf, it's right before Amberleaf.
Oh yeah, no, it's the short, it's narrow.
Right, so the board needs to sign the card.
Probably need to vote, right?
Motion to sign...
Agreement with Gil Engineering.
Some of.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Take a minute to sign this?
Yeah. So the town attorney has approved it, the form, the town accountant has certified the appropriation is in place, three sets.
We're talking about budgets, all right.
Yep.
It's a lot easier now that you bent it.
Look how fast this happens. So the other day, the bank calls and says, hey, we got some forged checks by you, Mr. Stevens. I said, you got forged checks? Oh my God, we got forged checks, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna stop payment, boy, we're gonna get them. So I said, okay, so I hang up, my wife calls them back, and those are the two checks I signed. Apparently, my wife signs all the checks in the business for the last 20 years, so my signature was a full...
Imagine that.
I'm so proud of you.
Yeah, I was the foretor. Didn't even know it. That was the worst one.
Love that one.
Yeah.
That's a successful...
Fiscal year 19, budget meeting schedule, holy cow...
That's 4A.
I'm on 5A.
Do we have to approve this?
It's attached. Yeah, the next recommendation.
Oh, that was a...
Because I just sent it down, and I need 4A back.
Since that was discussed in executive session, do we need to take a public vote on that?
On the other one?
Yes.
Right.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, that's these.
That's what we signed.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right. And then 5A is the same, but it's for the cemetery commission, because they now have the vacancy.
Erica's last name?
Baker.
Baker.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Shirtlift. Coming down.
Coming down.
I'm good.
The next is... Yes. Okay.
That's for the bridge design?
Yeah, that's for the Munbrook shirtlift bridge.
Where's that one located?
It's down there Seth Kellon's house, right before the...
That's the, oh, yeah.
It's a real old one.
Yes, it is. And narrow.
You know, you used to live over by that.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Yeah, before Amberleaf, it's right before Amberleaf.
Oh, yeah. No, it's the short, it's narrow.
Right, so the board needs to sign the con.
Probably need to vote, right?
Yeah. Motion to sign...
Agreement with Gil Engineering.
Some of them.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Take a minute to sign this?
Yeah. So, the town attorney has approved it, the form, the town accountant has certified the appropriation is in place. Three sets.
We're talking about budgets already.
Yep. Thank you, sir. Okay, coming down.
Yep. It's a lot easier now that you bent it. Watch how fast this happens.
So, the other day, the bank calls and says, hey, we got some forged checks by you, Mr. Pete. I said, you got forged checks? Oh, my God, we got forged checks. You know, we're gonna, we're gonna stop payment, boy, we're gonna get them. So, I said, okay, so I hang up, my wife calls them back, and those are the two checks I signed. Apparently, my wife signs all the checks in the business for the last 20 years, so my signature was a full...
Imagine that.
I'm so proud of you.
Yeah, I was the foretor. Didn't even know it. That was the worst one.
Love that one.
Yeah.
That's a successful one.
Fiscal year 19, budget meeting schedule. Holy cow, it's coming right up.
Look at that, huh?
Yeah.
We're just talking about budgets today.
Whether you do it tonight, or, you know, or the next meeting or two, we do need to firm that up so that we can have those Saturday dates set, and we can start notifying the different departments that need to be present for their budget hearings.
Very well.
Including the schools.
February 17th would be better for me.
Sounds good, Russ.
And I will go along with March 10th, although it is near a national holiday, but I don't think we can work it in. We gotta later better, so it's fine.
Okay, so tentative is 217 and 310.
Yeah. Okay, we'll pass those along.
Pass those, we'll confirm by next week. Yes.
Do we have a meeting next week?
Yes, we have a brief meeting next week.
Okay.
Ahead of some other activity with the FTA.
Yep, that's fine.
8A. This is from Chief David Ruperti.
Requested by the chief, yeah, he's got a disposal and a trade-in for different...
Eight guns.
Firearms for the process of his active shooter program for the department.
So, this is for 211, he needs $211.50.
Yes.
Well, he wants you to approve the disposition of the trade-in.
And the purchase order.
Right. Wants to trade in the low mileage guns for some different ones.
Right, and this is gonna be used for the active shooter program.
Right.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Maybe we can go shoot and practice one time before the trade-in.
Parker's gotta bring his own bowling.
I thought he was the...
Oh, shh, we didn't tell him that.
No.
So, technically, that was a vote to approve surplus. Okay.
Yes, right.
Come join the Southwick Firemen Association annual Christmas party, December 18th, 6:00 happy hour, 7:00 dinner, so 5:00 selectman's meeting.
5:00 selectman's meeting?
Sounds like it.
5:15.
Five, five, do I hear 5:30? 5:15 selectman's meeting.
And there's an ugly Christmas sweater competition, so don't forget that, guys. We're saying.
I could just wear any sweater I got and win.
Well...
Isn't that usually just association members?
Depends on what table we sit at.
Stop. Okay, and then this last one is confusing as heck to me. Mast dot, traffic control agreement for Conga Mon Road. I have a question. Is this generally just giving them the right to put up signs along Conga Mon Road, or is this during the construction project?
Well, I think it's ensuring that it's gonna be done as part of the project, but most of those signs are already there now, I think we all know that.
Yeah.
You look at the locations, but it's to make sure that we're gonna keep them there, and of course, they've already gone through, any signage in town originally went through a hearing process.
Correct. And there's no new signage as part of this?
I don't see, I didn't see anything that looked new in terms of all of my...
We, at the hearing, we talked about new signage at the rail trail, maybe?
Yeah.
As part of the design.
Part of the design. So, there might be a few new signs.
Part of my question.
Right, but these are for streets.
Right.
That's not a street.
Okay.
Did we look at all of these?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sheep Asher, Miller Road, Berkshire, Cottage.
One ways.
And don't forget Conga Mon Street that leads there onto that road. That's already a stop sign just coming out of Conga Mon Road onto...
From Sheep Asher, Kira?
There's a stop sign now.
No, you know where one of the, the bike trails is.
Rail trail.
That's Miller Road there.
Okay.
See North Pond, one side? That's already listed there.
All right.
They just wanna make sure that we're not changing any of those signs on there. And as you can see, town councils were viewed and approved to deform.
Yep.
You guys are signing it, now I'll sign it. Clorofol sign.
Do you need a motion to sign, or?
Yeah.
So moved.
Sign, okay.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
And that's just to sign it? Yep, traffic control agreements.
Chairman Fox sign it.
Chairman Fox, you can...
Attorney did a good job reviewing this.
Glad to think their attorney reviewed it.
Yeah, I'm glad to see that.
We would like a one-hour credit on our next bill, please. Thank you.
Listen, I'm just the clerk, okay?
Hey, I didn't say that was you. This is our town council.
I'm the clerk on this deal.
Are we signing in three places? Yes, we are.
No, just sign mine.
All right, come on, pal, it's Christmas.
What was the attorney's name again?
Huh?
Oh, yeah.
Do we cheat him at how?
Yeah.
This thing on.
This click and clack. With the Magliozzi brothers?
Easy. Might forge a check. Okay. Item 11A is from Dennis Clark. It's from Channel 15. I knew we upgraded our capability, but I didn't know it could write an email.
Actually, for the ag com...
I know, I'm just teasing, because I've read the email.
Yeah.
At last night's ag meeting, the commission discussed requesting the select board to approve the agricultural commission maintaining an officially sanctioned ag com Facebook page.
Right, the policy requires you to do that on a case-by-case basis with departments and boards.
We've done them.
We've done them in the past.
I make a motion to approve a Facebook page for the agricultural commission.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
And then this is from DPW Director Randy Brown. As you're aware, DPW posted vacant heavy equipment operator position for the transfer station. DPW received seven applications, interviewed four candidates. Based on reviewing applications, discussions, during interviews and reference checks, DPW recommends hiring Michael Bryant for this position. He's a current Westfield DPW employee and possesses the Class A CDL license and municipal limited hoisting license, which covers Class 1C hoisting machinery, 2B loader and backo, and 4G side mower while working for a municipality. I have confidence Mr. Bryant has the knowledge and skills to seamlessly step into this role and be a valuable employee from the town. And a motion to appoint Mr. Bryant. Subject to all the subjects, subject.
Yep.
I make a motion for Mr. Bryant to fill the vacant heavy equipment operator position.
Two motions, is a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carly, have a covered bridge update?
I did speak to town council today, and he has, is trying to secure the name of the attorney for the homeowners for the covered bridge project. He has spoken to their engineer, and the engineer has finished the report, but the owner of the report and the client wanted to go over it with his attorney first. So, Ben is making attempts to contact that attorney to get that facilitated.
Sounds like nothing but good news.
We need to convey to our attorney that the time is of the essence with this. This is dragging on and dragging on. I understand, but this is truly a safety issue.
Should we draw a line in the sand with the date?
Monday. I'm not opposed to next Monday.
Okay.
Yep, absolutely.
This has been going on since the spring, and I know the fire chief is very concerned about that, both for the members of our department and the people who live up there.
And if we don't get it by the 18th, you're authorizing town council to go to court and pursue the matter?
Correct. Yes.
Is that an association? Is that the, I mean, there must be a...
It's in their deed. It's in their deed that they're all jointly liable and responsible for that bridge and providing access to that bridge for emergency vehicles, if I remember.
There you go.
No update. I talked to the chief, but I didn't hear any update on North Pond. We'll carry this item. The TCC office service, it's getting late, we'll cover that next week. Other old business?
Uh, no.
I can't even think of this.
Yeah. Okay, new business, war memorial name placement eligibility.
Joseph had brought the issue up based upon input that he was getting from different individuals for name placement, and I know I've met with some people, even out here in the audience, Sean and Rick, and some other people's names have also come to light, so it really does bring forward the need to have more of a policy on how the placement of names would go onto our monuments. And that can be, it can be basically any way a community wants to. Some communities only do it based upon the hometown of the enlistment, but, and others don't have such a restriction. So, the board needs to give thought about what it wants to do here locally, and Joe and I have had some discussions about this.
So, basically, it comes down to the DD 214 form, and that's what I used for the current monument that we have installed in the center of town. That worked for me. There was plenty of questions throughout that process, and I just stood by that form, because that's what I was told by a lot of active or, you know, military folks, that's how you did it. I believe after Vietnam is kinda where that all came from. Before Vietnam, it wasn't so much like if you were in war or not in war, it is what it is. So, talking to Carl and meeting with the folks in the back there, there's some thought about, well, so they served, they got out of the service, they ended up in Southwick, and they've been here 60 years. So, back in the day, if you were gonna enlist, I believe at that point in time, they would nicely tell you, you know, where do you want your mail to go? Where do you want your next of kin to be notified? And if mom lived in Springfield, you put down mom's address. Fast forward a million years later, your DD 240 says you enlisted out of Springfield. You could have been a Southwick boy, you could have been a Grandville boy, but that's what the form said, and that's what we went by. So, me and Carl kinda did some brainstorming, and if you did come up with basically a theory of if you've been in town a generation or two generations or three generations, then that may shed some light in changing a policy. What I suggested to Carl was basically maybe reach out to both the VFW and American Legion and get some thought process first, and then you can probably put someone in charge of it to come back to the board with some more information.
Oh, I know who we'd like to put in charge of it.
Mr. Fox?
No, that'd be you.
Thanks.
I'll second that one.
I thought you would.
Joe and I could meet with both organizations.
Yeah.
Just to, we wanna make sure they're comfortable with it, too.
Didn't we talk with the veterans agent also?
Oh, and the veterans agent also, yeah.
Yeah, we can have him, well, again, he gave me information, Agawam, you have to have been from Agawam when you enlisted, so it really does vary.
You know, it's interesting, because I have not served in any service, other than being married for all these years. And, you know, the question does, you know, I laugh, because you, so if I'm the guy in the service that was stationed at Westover loading bombs up to go to some other country to be dropped, and in today's day and age, well, you didn't see action, so you shouldn't go on a memorial, I get that, but if the guy in Westover wasn't loading material to get over there, you would have nothing to drop. So, I think once you enlist in the service, you're enlisted, and where they dictate where you go isn't your calling for the most part. So, it's an interesting question, and it brings up a lot of, you know, where do you land in this whole project?
I think it's also from the perspective of, because, you know, we've had this conversation or, you know, I've, there's been this discussion, and where you could have an 18-year-old kid from Eastern Mass, Eastern Mass.
Sure.
And, but he comes home from war and settles in Southwick, and he's here the next 50 years, and that's what you call your home.
Right.
And so, when the time comes to do that and put your name in perpetuity, we're in a town where everybody knew you, so I think it's the right thing to do to go out and talk to the veterans groups, make sure that they're in agreement and that there's a process, and it's a consistent policy that we make, and I think, to commend you, I think what you've done so far is we've been incredibly consistent.
We have.
So, if we're gonna change it, that's good, but at least we'll have, then we'll have a policy that's gonna be consistent going forward as to how it's gonna work, and, you know, we didn't slight anybody, it's a memorial, so...
Right. And the ones we're speaking of now, you know, one gentleman's been here for 60 years, and I don't know about the one that just recently got brought in. So, it's not our current monument we're speaking about. It's about World War II and that era of life, so, you know.
But I think, you know, there's something to be said for, you know, if someone, where someone considers their home versus where they signed up out of or where they started, and...
And as long as they're not on a monument.
Oh, that's true, yeah. We're gonna have a one monument policy, I would assume, but let's hear from the veterans groups, and we'll talk to the VFW and the Legion and the veterans agent, and come to an agreement and a policy that works, and we'll go from there. Because I know you've done yeoman work over there, and you're gonna continue to do yeoman work over there, so...
Yeoman.
No.
I got you. And since you, how long have you lived in this town?
20 years.
So, where do you consider yourself?
This is the longest I've lived anywhere in my life. So, yeah. And it made me think, right? Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely, you know.
No doubt.
So, something happens, we don't ship you back to Jersey?
Well, you know, well, that could happen.
All right. All right.
Wow.
Next.
Do we need an executive session this evening, sir?
No.
No executive session?
I have one more new business. We have to look at my winter schedule and think about switching meetings till Tuesday nights here once we hit Christmas vacation, like we did last year.
That's my bowling night.
Well, January, I mean, we're, we're gonna be meeting...
Damn, I was gonna sign up for bowling, too.
After New Year's, we're gonna be meeting January second, you could just have it start that day.
Yep, that'd be fine.
Because you're already scheduled to start January second.
Oh, perfect.
The first is a halt, it's a holiday, and you already have the Christmas...
It's a sign already. Right, there you go. Check your schedule, get back to me.
Well, I got a little...
What'd he say, bowling?
Procedure.
I thought they tore out all the bowling alleys.
Well, he's got a procedure, do you want to tell the press about your procedure?
No.
Or you wanna wait, okay.
No, no, I'm just...
All right, moving forward.
We'll, we'll bring that up under old business next week.
No, actually, that'll probably work out better.
Okay.
If a doctor says I can come that night.
Yeah. As long as you get cleared, we'll be fine.
Or we can wait another week for meetings, it's been quiet anyways.
And quiet is good.
Quiet is good.
Quiet is very good. Any other new business, gentlemen?
Nope.
Okay.
Let me just close this folder and get organized, because I spread out everywhere.
I'll take the red folder, if you don't mind.
I know, I just have to review all of that stuff.
Oh, great.
All right. Don't forget to send your blank one down.
Oh, yeah.
You guys wanna review and discuss this, since it's all fresh in our minds?
Sure.
I, you know, I'd kind of like to sleep on it, you know? We had three great interviews and a kind of curve thrown at us, so I'd kind of like to sleep on it and digest it and tackle it at the next meeting.
Joseph?
I think we've had everything long enough to make a decision tonight. Get it off, but that's my opinion.
Good to you.
Well, the only reason why I say that is, I mean, the chief isn't leaving until June.
Oh, I understand that, and whatever we do doesn't take effect...
Right.
Till the chief leaves, absolutely, this isn't a...
So I mean, it's not, you know, if it was something where we needed to do right away and implement, I have no problem, I just would like to go over my notes and refresh myself and think about life.
Well... This is one of those times, it sucks being the chairman. I think, personally, I could, I could do this either way. I do think that this is one of the most important responsibilities we have as selectmen and police commissioners, obviously, is to, is to hire and appoint the chief. I think we have three incredibly talented, and we are blessed, for lack of a better word, to have the plethora of candidates that we have, qualified candidates that we have in front of us. That being said, I think this board has a great working relationship, and we're meeting again Monday, and if any one of us would, wants that time to get that done, I fully support it, and so let's just do that, and to your point, you know, the chief isn't leaving until June, we have adequate time, and we can carry this to our agenda as probably one of the only things we're gonna do next Monday, right?
As far as I know.
And there you go.
Sounds good, thank you.
So you want a consistent agenda, if anything?
No, it'll be a light agenda.
Okay.
A light agenda. But I think, you know, this is a big decision, and I wouldn't want to deny anyone on the board the opportunity to come to the table with their best recommendation to do this, do this the right way. And I, it also goes to, you know, the candidates themselves, I think we owe it to the candidates to have everybody that wants to be studied up and be ready to make their, put their best foot forward on a recommendation for this. There you go. Motion to adjourn?
Somewhat.
Second?
All in favor?